Okay, good evening. We're going to call this planning commission meeting to order. And our Commissioner Bob Hagel will lead us in the flag salute.
Stand and put your hand over your heart and start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put your hand over your heart and start. I like that, okay. I haven't really heard that before, okay. Roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Vice Chair Hagel.
Here.
Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
And we do not have Commissioner Ruiz.
Excused? Yes, well, he told me last time that he wasn't going to be able to be here.
Okay.
Do we have any public comments that are not on agendized items?
We have not received any on non-agendized.
Okay. Then we will go to the consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right, so we have the minutes. Do I have a, well, let's see, we have the minutes and we also have the director's hearing summary report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Up the consent calendar.
Second.
And a second. So, motion by Gary and a second by Fernando. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that a?
No. Sorry, it's a late aye.
Okay, that was a aye, all right. Okay, then we'll move to our public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing. For public hearings, wait, at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing, I can't remember if I already read that, but I want to make sure, all right. There's a lot of public hearing going on here. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right. We will start with item number three. That would be R. Jaime, planning application number PA23-0323, a public convenience or necessity application for a proposed type 21 off-sale general and type 86 instructional tasting alcohol license for Smart &amp; Final located at 32937 Temecula Parkway. Jaime.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Oscar, can you pull up my presentation view on my monitor? I could see it, but not on the presentation mode. Sorry about that. So yes, as described, this is a public convenience or necessity application for a proposed type 21. That's the off-sale general and the type 86 instructional tasting alcohol license for Smart &amp; Final Extra. So this image shows an aerial view of the address at 32937 Temecula Parkway and within the red is the project site area. This is formerly the Best Buy electronics store. And this is generally located within the Butterfield, or it's located within the Butterfield Commercial Center approximately 1,000 feet southwest of the Temecula Parkway and Butterfield Stage Road intersection. So moving on to the space itself, this is the floor plan that was provided by the applicant. The total square footage is 23,175 square feet of floor space. And just to orient ourselves within this floor plan, area highlighted in red is the Here we have the produce section, bakery tables, the deli, dairy, meat section, frozen foods, back of house, standard operations, lockers, food prepping, storage, et cetera. Here in the middle is all the shelving where the canned and packaged food and other miscellaneous goods are stored. Checkout lanes and kiosks. And then, of course, the area designated for alcohol. So we have a total of 147 square feet of refrigerated cases, 271 square feet of dry shelving totaling 418 square feet of designated alcohol sales area, which amounts to 1.8% of the designated floor space for beer, wine, and spirits. So moving on to the analysis side of things, the applicant seeks the type 21 off-sale general license, which allows for the incidental sale of alcohol to customers. This allows for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Patrons under 21 are permitted in the premises. No CUP is required for grocery stores to sell alcohol. The type 86 instructional tasting license will allow for the type 21 license holders to provide tastings on-site. No CUP is required for a type 86, as this is considered ancillary to the alcohol sales and to the overall store operations. The type 21 is a prerequisite to allow for instructional tastings. And selling alcohol is strictly incidental to the primary use of the store itself, which primary sales and floor space, as you saw before, mainly consists of selling food, so meats, seafood, produce, canned goods, breads, water, juice, frozen foods, chips, et cetera, and miscellaneous goods, including, you know, your napkins, disposable trays, chafers, serving utensils, food containers, cookware, et cetera. No live entertainment is proposed, and the proposed operating hours of the store is from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. So in case we need a reminder as to when findings for a PCN required, is required, this is once the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control has determined that a specific location that's in a census tract has an overconcentration for liquor licenses. So Temecula is comprised of 20 individual census tracts and the subject property, and the license concentration is based on Riverside County census formulas with populations. And the specific property corresponds to tract 43256. This is the enlarged version of 43256, as mentioned. There is, overconcentration is based on residential population within a census tract. And in this census tract, we have a population of 3,585. A total of two off-sale licenses are allowed, total of three on-sale licenses are allowed, and there are seven on-sale, off-sale licenses as of October 2023. And the area highlighted in red that you see within the yellow boundary shows the concentration of these licenses. So this includes your Walmart, Ralph's, Jackson Market, Circle K, CVS, 7-Eleven, Sprouts. So from an environmental determination standpoint, the project is categorically exempt per Section 15301 Class 1 as existing facilities. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission approve PA230323, the PCN, subject to the conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Staff's here to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you, Jaime. Okay, do we have any questions of staff at this time? No questions on this end? Bob?
Where, where within the store do you know will be the location for the alcohol tasting?
So let me pull up the floor plan once again.
Okay.
So the lower right-hand corner of the store, actually right where it says alcohol, would be an open area that allows for the tasting kiosks.
Okay. So the tasting would be restricted to that area?
Correct.
The other question is there, do you know if there's a restriction on hours of tasting? What hours during the day you can have tasting?
I know specifically that for the, this, this use, it would be just through the hours that they're proposing. It's not anything that has been conditioned.
So as it stands right now, tastings could occur between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00, 10:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, those are good questions, questions I didn't have to ask. There you go. Any other questions of staff? No? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and have our applicant come up, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Turley Trejo and fellow commissioners. I'm glad to be back at Temecula tonight, even though it took me a couple hours driving in the rain. I'm a former 20-year resident here. My children went to school here in Temecula.
What is your name?
Peter Impala.
Okay.
Sorry. So I'm here representing Smart &amp; Final, and I can answer, maybe elaborate a little bit more on your question, Chairman Hagel. But Smart &amp; Final is one of the oldest alcohol retailers in California. They actually predate the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. I think their first stores were in the 20s and 30s. And they're very experienced, they have a lot of security, as you can see on the plans. They've got over, they've got 50 security cameras in this store alone. And the alcohol in their stores is always placed near the checkout counters with the distilled spirits in that portion you saw behind the checkout counter. So they have real good, aside from the cameras, on-site vision from the checkers to the alcohol area to avoid theft and grab and go. The type 86 is ancillary to these licenses, so there's not a permanent area set up for them. So they, what happens is, and especially here in Temecula, you've got a lot of craft breweries and, of course, the, all the wineries, they, they would be typically the people that do the tastings. The 86 license is issued with the 21-2, Smart &amp; Final. However, the way it works is their vendors or their growers or the manufacturers of the products will come in and they will set up their table with their product on it. And the tastings are very limited. Previously, they didn't have this license. It was issued, it was generated several years ago to stop or help the, I guess, manufacturers get their product tasted, but also a lot of the stores like Bevmo and everything, the old ones you'll see, they had type 42 bar licenses in the store just to do the tastings. And that's very complicated because you can't have any minors in there and you've got to have a permanent area always there. So this, this made it a lot easier and also controlled the portions for the tastings, which is 3/4 ounce for a distilled spirit and 3 1-ounce servings for wine or beer. So very, very controlled. And as to the hours that they do this, it's typically, I do other supermarkets too, like Ralph's has a lot of these. And they, they tend to do it during the peak shopping hours. So you might see them set up there at like 4:00 or the lunch hour or the dinner hour rush. So it's usually, you know, 4:00 to 7:00, 8:00 o'clock, and then, you know, typically when people are in the store at the peak times. And the vendors come in, a lot of them send, there's professionals they hire to do this, that, a lot of them make you sign in and check your age and ID right there for a tasting. So hopefully that helps clarify what the 86 does.
Yeah, so the, I, what I'm hearing is that this is pretty much for the local winery's producers to allow them to come in and, and do tastings.
Yeah, I, I see that Smart &amp; Final is doing this only in select locations, and this is one of their brand-new models, so.
There's a place to do it, this would be it.
It's going to be a beautiful store, yeah, supermarket.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? No? Okay, yeah, I think that was my question too on the tasting. I know I just saw a sign in Ralph's that they're, they're asking for that license. That's interesting.
Yeah, I think so. Ralph's is doing them in quite a few stores, the Fresh Fair stores.
Yeah.
They're, they're also selecting locations like this that they want to, you know, they're getting more requests from, they're getting a lot of requests from their vendors to do it.
Yeah.
So they're putting the licenses to facilitate it.
Well, I think, and for us coming from our end, at least my perspective, that it sounds like Smart &amp; Final has a lot of experience with alcohol sales and having it close to the front where you can see what's happening. We're just, you know, we're concerned if it's a concern, right? We're concerned if it's a problem, and we just hope it won't be a problem.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we're coming from.
And I will say that we did file the ABC application for these in, around the middle of July, and there's that 30-day notification period that they do to the residents within 500 feet, which you saw, there are some in that census tract. And we didn't get any letters of concern or protest filed at the ABC level during that time. Also, those census tracts always are over-concentrated because the commercial strips take such a big section of them, you know?
Right.
There's all those census tracts back there that don't have any, they're also have an allotment.
Yeah, we're wondering about that process.
Yeah, they don't have any.
Right.
So it's kind of a skewed system of, of working it out.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And do we have any discussion before we entertain a motion? Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
I just want to say, I, I agree with you on the design of the alcohol. You obviously have a lot of experience. I've been in your stores over the many, many years, and I like the way that they, they, not only where they put the alcohol in the front of the store, but the fact that the higher, higher alcohol level products are in a place that's really hard to get to, and so you don't have a lot of smash and grab and run out of the store type situations, which can always be a concern, so.
Okay. You have a motion? Anybody?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right, motion to approve by Fernando and a second by Bob for planning application number, where are we? Here we are, PA23-0323. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? I don't think so. 4-0, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. All right, we will move to item number four, long-range planning, project number LR22-0158, amending Title 16 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to urban lot splits and SB 9 to unit developments. Matt Peters, you're on.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before I begin, hopefully you have pen or pencil and you can take some notes. I do expect or anticipate some questions at the end of this presentation. It's just the nature of the project. So this is SB 9 Urban Lot Split Ordinance. The presentation is broken down into three sections. The first section, we're going to ask, answer the question, what is SB 9? Second section will be the history and timeline of the ordinance associated with SB 9, and then we're going to discuss additional city requirements to promote orderly development. So what is SB 9? It's a Senate bill referred to as the Home Act, standing for housing opportunity and more efficiency. It allows urban lot splits and two-unit projects by right in single-family residential zones. This means local agencies must ministerially approve both a lot split and two units on each in single-family zones. This is with no hearings, no public input, and no SEQA, and there's no discretion for the city to deny a project if it meets all of the SB 9 requirements. The new lot resulting from the urban lot split can be sold separately. This next section is an illustration of an SB 9 example. And you see an air photo here with an existing single-family residence in an existing single-family zone. The red dash line represents the urban lot split. And then the next slide represents, number one would be the primary dwelling unit, number two would be an accessory dwelling unit, and then units three and four would be a duplex, totaling four units. And that's, I guess, a typical illustration of an SB 9 urban lot split. The max number of units is capped at four, so you can have the primary structure and an ADU on one lot, as was illustrated, and then you could have a duplex on the other new lot created, resulting in four. Or you could have any combination of a primary unit, a duplex, an ADU, or a junior ADU, as long as the development does not exceed four units. The city cannot impose standards that would prohibit the construction of up to two units at least 800 square feet each, so we have to allow at least 800 square feet units. In terms of location, the parcel lot or development must be located in a single-family residential zone. They cannot be located in a special flood hazard area, high fire severity zone, earthquake fault zone, on a historic property, or in a historic district. With regard to parcel size, the parcel must be a minimum of 2,400 square feet in size. Each new lot is at least 1,200 square feet. The agency may set lower per state law, we did not choose to do that. And the split may result in two new lots of approximately equal size, 60/40 being the split at the most of the original parcel. An example of that would be if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot with a 60/40 split, the two new lots, one of them would have to be 3,000 square feet and the other 2,000 square feet. There is a, in the law, there's a provision for existing unit protection, so the lot split cannot require the demo or alteration of an affordable housing unit. And the housing development project cannot result in the demolition of more than 25% of the exterior walls of an existing residence unless the project meets one of the following. First, if local ordinance allows it, we did not choose to do that. And then the second is if the unit or the residence has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. As for standards, development standards, under SB 9, local agencies may only impose objective design standards. Those are measurable standards. And we have those for duplexes and multifamily dwelling units. And the planning commission adopted those December 1, 2021, and then the city council adopted January 25, 2022. May require only, so the city may require only one off-street parking space per unit and none if within a half-mile to a high-quality transit stop, or if there's a car-share vehicle location within one block of the project. That's per state law. Setbacks are limited to four feet on side and rear yards, but none at all on an existing structure or one constructed in the same location. And I have an illustration of that coming up in the presentation. Additional units constructed after two primary dwelling units shall not exceed 16 feet in height, in one-story in height, but you may go to 18 feet if you're within a half-mile of a high-quality transit stop, or 25 feet if you're attached to a primary dwelling unit. Again, that's state law incorporated into our development code. There are no right-of-way dedications or construction of off-site improvements that may be required. No corrections of non-conforming uses or structures are allowed. Again, this is all per state law. The owner must sign an affidavit that they will occupy one of the units as their principal residence for three years. Local agencies must report SB 9 lot splits in an annual housing element report, which we do every April. And then there are no short-term rentals or STRs, which means less than 30 days. The history on this, so SB 9 was passed, I think it was 2021, and then shortly thereafter, February of '22, the city council approved an interim urgency ordinance related to urban lot splits to address SB 9. And then, under urgency ordinance law, the city was allowed an extension, and that extension was approved January 24, 2023, for an additional 10 months and 15 days. So the city has, through February 21, 2024, under the urgency ordinance, and we're taking our final ordinance to the planning commission tonight and then the city council so that we can have an ordinance in place before the urgency ordinance expires. Moving on, the two new code sections are how we're incorporating SB 9 into the city's development code. We're adding a section to Chapter 16 under subdivisions, which identifies the information required to submit a tentative parcel map. And then Chapter 17 zoning will include definitions, development standards, setbacks, and design review requirements. Some additional provisions to the state law that have been included in our ordinance includes additional units constructed after two primary dwellings shall be no more than 1,200 square feet in floor area. We must allow 800. And the reason we chose 1,200 square feet is to be consistent with ADU law. With accessory dwelling unit law, there's a lot of overlap between SB 9 and ADU, and we wanted to be consistent to make it easier for administration by the city. We're requiring 10 feet between habitable buildings, and that's to address California Building Code, Fire Code, but then also for maintenance, construction of habitable units, 10 feet is considered standard for maintenance vehicles or lift trucks, that sort of thing. And a new lot line must meet the four-foot minimum setback from rear and side yard. In addition, new lot lines must be straight from front property line to the rear property line with no curves or with minimal angles. And that's an objective design standard to promote orderly development. And here's an example of what could be allowed per SB 9 without that requirement. So if you're able to follow my cursor, I don't know if you can see that, but the purple lines indicate a lot line at the end of a cul-de-sac. lines indicate a lot line at the end of a cul-de-sac, and then you have an existing residence with a three car garage, and then a new duplex in the back. The red line shows a proposed lot line with all kinds of jogs and angles. And if we were to get that or to allow that, it would really cause issues in terms of knowing where your property begins and ends and also maintenance on your unit. So if you have the existing residence and the lot line goes right along the, follows the building footprint, if you have to maintain a window, paint your house, you then, without any setbacks, you need permission from the neighbor so you can do that. It just causes all kinds of issues. We want to avoid that. Furthermore, with objective design standards, the cities, as I mentioned, objective design standards address duplexes and multifamily units. Staff will be working with placeworks to update objective design standards to address single family. But for now, in our ordinance, we're including requirements for objective design standards to ensure consistency of colors, materials, roof pitch, window sizes, and other design elements to match existing or proposed units. In addition, the city is exploring an affordability covenant for new lot, for new development resulting from an urban lot split. One of the two parcels created would include a deed restriction for one income restricted dwelling unit for a very low, low or moderate income household. And one of the four units would be subject to the deed restriction. This would help the city meet its RENA allocation of four thousand one hundred ninety three units. And the limited size of twelve hundred square feet would be more conducive to affordability, but we're exploring that. If we, if we do move forward, we've been working with HCD, we've been working with our city attorney, and that requirement would be considered, the requiring of an affordability covenant on one of the four units is considered an inclusionary zoning ordinance. So HCD has a threshold of fifty, fifteen percent of units in a development. If a city requires fifteen percent of the total units to be affordable, when you go above that threshold, then it's considered an inclusionary zoning ordinance. And with that, the city must conduct an economic feasibility study to provide evidence that the ordinance does not unduly constrain the production of housing, make it too expensive. Currently, we're working with Kaiser Marshland Associates, KMA, to look at that, and if we did move forward, we'd also need to provide an in lieu fee. With that, the project is exempt from SEQA pursuit to government codes, section six five eight five two point two one J and six six four one one point seven N, and also SEQA guidelines, sections fifteen three zero three and fifteen zero one six one B three. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution, recommending that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure I will be relying on fellow staff and our city attorney to help me out with that.
Thank you, Matt. We just met as a subcommittee regarding this, so we asked a lot of questions. So it's a lot of information. One thing that maybe you could just share right at, right at the beginning that I think is really important is a scenario with this urgency ordinance expiring. And what happens if we don't have this ordinance in place? That was really important for me to hear in the subcommittee.
Yeah, so the urgency ordinance goes through February twenty one of twenty twenty four, so just a few months. If we don't adopt an ordinance, then we rely completely on state law.
And what would that, what would happen if we relied completely on state law?
It's hard to explain the entire scenario of what would happen without SB nine, but I think our ordinance includes some additional protections for the city and for our neighborhoods in terms of objective design standards, basic layout configuration and the straight lot line.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what I was getting at, that the, we wouldn't have the conformity of what that looks like with the person's house and what they're building next to it.
Yeah, some of the additional setbacks that are being required to promote orderly, orderly development.
Anyway, I wanted to kind of have that at the beginning so we know how important it is that we decide on something that would, that would fit for us as an ordinance before this expires, the temporary urgency ordinance expires. So that, I did want to bring that out. Do you want to say anything, Gary, before others ask questions? Okay. Okay. All right. Do we have any questions of staff? I'm sure we do.
I have a couple. It was a lot of information. I have just three, four questions about, mostly about access and about actually the process of when this lot does get cut up. You know, future, you could say improvements, you know, and how that plays into, in the future, how these lots get divided. Could you go to the, there was a, there was a lot, like an example, and there was a red little broken line? Okay, so this one, so for example, so in this situation, is this saying that parcel three and four can be owned by another person?
Those are units. So to be parcel one and parcel two, and then units three and four.
So, so in this, in this type of urban lot split, would there be two owners of this or would there only be one? But there'll be two lots?
It could be either.
It could be either.
So it could either be where you see one and two, that's one lot. Where you see three and four, that's the second lot. The owner could choose that, for the new lot that's created, they can sell that off or they can retain it and own both lots.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is that there's a, there's a section that says that the owner has to live there for the first three years before he sells it off. So say this person creates this lot, then he has to live there for three years, and then he would be able to sell off the lot that has house number three and four.
So the initial lot that's created, that one can be sold off. It's the primary lot that needs to be maintained, and this is under state law. This is not just in our local ordinance. It needs to be maintained or owned by the primary owner as their residence for a three year period, and then they could sell that lot off.
Got it. Okay. That was one, one of the questions. And then the second question is access. In the corner lots, this is a perfect scenario. I would say this is, the best scenario would be a corner lot. But you have another example. Can you pull up the other example? Where it's kind of had that jagged line? Okay, for like, for example, this one. So would there be, in this new code, would this require that this property have two accesses? So like two driveways?
So in this scenario, splitting this lot would be difficult, given the sixty forty max and the location of that primary residence. However, you could do a flag lot in this situation. So the flag lot would allow a twenty foot wide access at the end of the cul-de-sac for a driveway to the back of the lot.
So in that situation, one of the requirements is a twenty foot wide access to the back of the lot?
Yeah.
So that's a minimum access.
That's a minimum.
So if someone cannot meet that twenty feet, then this is not a feasible lot to lot split?
That's correct.
Okay. And then in a situation like that, would there be two driveway approaches, two independent driveway approaches?
Likely, they could potentially share driveway approach and it could split, but more than likely, it would probably be two separate driveways accessing the public right of way. I have another example, an illustration. This is kind of a rural configuration, but I thought it was a decent illustration. So you have the three homes along the street, and then you have a flag lot in the back, highlighted by the yellow line. So in theory, that driveway access, they're showing a dash line like it's a road, but that would be a twenty foot wide driveway.
My only concern is that I, I don't know if I'm too excited over two different property owners sharing the same access. And I wanted to know if there's anything that we can maybe think about of if there is some type of easement that has to be done, that when it's time for repairs, that they would both be equally required to improve that area, because in twenty, thirty years, that area would, would need repair. But then it kind of gets complicated because then no one wants to improve it.
Yeah. It's, I'm familiar in the past, working in different jurisdictions with a shared driveway or shared access agreement. And it's all spelled out. It's a pretty standard document.
Okay, okay. So there would be something like that?
There could be. I don't know that we have it, quite honestly.
I will check. I recall that there was some sort of easement requirement in the ordinance, but I'll.
Okay. I think my, my, my only concern would be improvements in the future, where it could be very clear that they're both liable if they both share that access to the, if they're both sharing the, the access as an easement, then they need to both improve the subject site, if and when it has to be improved.
Well, I think it might depend, because under certain scenarios, it's the underlying property owner that's on the hook for repairs and maintenance to the property. So it could be a scenario where they have the primary residences in the front, and then they're renting out in the back. Ordinarily, you don't put the obligation on the renter to maintain driveway access. That's the property owner's obligation.
In the event that that second parcel gets sold?
So you can't sell on one lot. It's, it's only, I know this gets very confusing, but there, when there's an urban lot split, that second lot is, is, is different. So you wouldn't have a flag lot on that second lot, like connected to the first lot. I'm not explaining that well.
No, I understand. I guess that, that is my concern, the flag lots. But a flag lot, when there's dual access and access is being used for both units as a flag lot.
Right, but under that scenario, wouldn't it be the same property owner? Yeah, if there's a, or would you?
It could be, or they could sell the flag lot.
And that's my concern. My concern is if and when the flag lot gets sold and both parcels are using the same access, then.
Yeah. The, the flag lot requirement would require the twenty foot access specific to the flag lot, so they wouldn't be sharing.
So they couldn't share? Okay, so then, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
To address your earlier question, the ordinance does require that there be a vehicle access easement that meets certain standards, including having that minimum width of twenty feet. So there is an easement that actually is a requirement.
And is there a minimum size for these urban lot splits for the units?
There's no minimum size. Whatever you can build per California building code.
Well, what is that?
I think it's one hundred and fifty square feet. It's pretty tiny.
So they're, okay. And my last question would be, it was easement and utilities. How does the water company feel about providing new meters in locations at maybe the infrastructure? Are they required to provide an additional meter?
They are.
They are? By state law, so?
Yes.
Okay.
These all have to be metered separately.
Okay, that, that was my next question. Okay. Well, it's a lot of information. Thank you.
Good questions. Bob? Yep, some questions?
Where to start? Parking. Could you just talk a little bit about the required, I gather there is, is a required street parking? Is, I'm not quite sure what all that meant regarding the parking street.
Do you want me to answer that one?
If you could, I was just going to find the section.
Um, so we can only require one off street parking space per unit. And so that's what the ordinance has. There is an exception, of course, as there always is, under two scenarios. One, where the parcel is located within a certain, within a block of a car share vehicle, and the other is when it's located within half of mile of a high quality transit corridor. And my understanding from earlier today is that there's one location within Temecula that is.
It's at the mall.
Okay. So in that case?
They would not be, if they meet the criteria, they would not be required to provide one space per unit.
Per unit, okay. So the ADU in that case would not have to have one, nor the, a single or duplex residential on a second lot would not be required to have parking on their property?
So I think it's the new unit that's coming in, so the ADU, and this is, this language mirrors ADU law as well. The ADU wouldn't be required, the initial primary residence still has their, their park, their parking requirements. Similarly, if the lot is split
Right.
and a new primary residence is constructed, they would meet the primary residence parking requirements, and it's the additional unit on the lot that would be exempt if they fall under.
Okay. So if that second lot has a duplex, what's, what's considered the primary residence there?
So if you have, these are good questions. The, if you have the primary dwelling unit, and then you split the lot and you build a duplex, the duplex itself is considered the primary dwelling unit. So it'd be like unit A and unit B of the primary.
Right. So then, that would be considered two units with each having to have parking?
Yes. One spot each.
One spot each, so that would be, so in the case of a duplex, it would be a minimum of two, two spots?
Two spots, correct. Correct.
Now, if they are within a transit area, would that mean then that neither duplexes, zero for the duplexes?
Zero.
But obviously, the primary would already have had a, but, and there would be no additional parking required for the ADU?
Right. And it's not covered either. So typically, a, a single family home comes in, we require a twenty by twenty clear garage to accommodate two spaces. Those are covered. Parking associated with an urban lot split or ADU would not be covered. You just need to provide a space. It could even be tandem, so back to back.
So let's say that this property is in a HOA. And can the HOA restrict on street parking? Or if they do now, does that by law go away?
I, our ordinance doesn't, so you're, you're saying because the HOA would say you can't park on the street?
Some of the HOAs do not allow parking on the street, whether it's legal or not.
Our ordinance only addresses the off street parking, not the on street parking.
So the city could not restrict on street parking, nor could an HOA? The state law would trump that, that they would.
This law doesn't address on street parking. It only addresses off street parking.
But if you're in an HOA that has private streets and the HOA restricts on street parking, then, then they would run into an issue. We wouldn't, we wouldn't enforce anything related to that because it's CCNRs and a private HOA, but yeah, that, that could be an issue for a homeowner, depending on the HOA and the scenario.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of all kinds of future scenarios, because if we can think of it, it will come up, so.
I think you've done more policy analysis than the state did before they passed the law.
The, in a case of a duplex. The, in a case of a duplex. With the, uh, that second, um, one that you had up there with the jagged lines. Did I see that there was two duplexes? So you could have an ADU and four units, or an ADU just with one duplex?
So in, in the front. Oh my goodness. Technical difficulties, I'm sorry.
I got you on this one.
Okay.
You can't. While you're looking it up for the other commissioners, we, uh, we did bombard staff with a lot of questions such as you're doing so. Have at it because we, we had a lot of questions, ran over time a little bit, so bought you a little time there, Matt.
Thank you. So Commissioner Hagel, uh, if you follow my cursor on the screen, this is the existing residence. This would be the primary. That's a single unit. In the back, you have one unit and then another. This would be a duplex, a T-shaped duplex. They're attached.
So that's becomes a, in essence, a fourplex. Is that what that's saying?
It's, it's two units.
Okay, so, because it says proposed duplex unit A, proposed duplex unit B.
So it's one unit, it's one duplex with the unit A and the unit B.
Okay, all right, so that's, okay, and then this, in this scenario, you don't have an ADU?
No ADU. You have a primary and a duplex, total of three units.
Right.
And under state law, you can have a maximum of four. So whether that's through the urban lot split and you put two units on one and two units on the other, or you don't split and you just do four on one lot, but four is kind of the magic number.
Right, okay. But the four includes the primary residence?
Correct.
Okay. The, um. Restrictions. We said that, that, uh, the state would not allow any restrictions. Is that correct, or that's not correct?
The city, uh, the state allows us to impose, um, objective zoning and subdivision standards and design standards, which is what the ordinance has done. And so that's how we've applied our architectural and all the other standards into this ordinance.
So those are standards, so we could not apply, uh, restrictions that would reduce the opportunity to, to build?
Correct. We have to allow the construction of up to an, two eight-hundred square-foot units. And cannot impose our standards if it precludes the construction of two eight-hundred square-foot units.
So the eight-hundred is a minimum or a maximum?
The minimum of.
Size?
The size that we have to allow. So if, if someone wants to do smaller, they can, but if they want to come through the door and do two eight-hundred unit, two eight-hundred square-foot units, and for some reason, let's say our front setback requirement precludes that, we would have to waive that requirement to allow the construction of those two eight-hundred square-foot units.
So if they want to do a three-thousand square-foot duplex, fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred, they could do that?
Um, didn't we have though a thousand-two-hundred square-foot maximum on the second unit? I'll defer to Matt on that.
So the, so you have the pri, you're allowed two primary units. So you have the existing residence on lot one, and then on lot two, the duplex is considered a primary. There's no restriction on the size of that.
Okay. I'm good for now.
Gary, you wanna, do you have any further questions, or?
Just to clarify, in this case, we've got three units on two lots, correct? Um, the only additional to make four would be allowed on proposed new lot A. You couldn't put it on lot B. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think I actually had a question from Fernando when he was talking about there could be a hundred and fifty square foot. I mean, there's no minimum or on the size of a, of, of the other unit.
I can find the section.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that. I was a little confused on that. I mean, a hundred and fifty square feet, like literally.
The way it's written now, "The minimum living area of a dwelling unit constructed under this section shall be one-hundred-and-fifty square feet, subject to the restrictions specified in the Health and Safety Code." I do think we can increase that.
Yeah, that comes from the, I, I'll look it up, but I'm fairly certain that that comes from ADU law and that we have to allow an efficiency unit, and I believe an efficiency unit is a hundred-and-fifty square feet in size. So that would never be the primary dwelling unit. It's just what legally an ADU, like a, like a really small.
Let me visualize a hundred and fifty square feet right now.
That would be a junior ADU?
It could be a J, J, a J, a J U D, uh, J A D U, sorry, which is within the home itself or within the garage. But there's also what you would consider an efficiency unit, which I don't think necessarily needs to be in the home, but let me look up the health.
Yeah, JDU is not based on size, it's based on the kitchen, right?
Uh, the efficiency unit definition is based on, I thought, both size and also like what, what's defined as a kitchen.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I have one more question.
A hundred and fifty square feet. Give me a visual right now, somebody.
One bedroom. Well, a garage, a twenty-by-twenty garage is four-hundred square feet, so split that in half and take off another ten-by-five.
Yeah, a bedroom.
It's just that.
It's the size of your car.
Or a parking stall.
Ten-by-fifteen.
Parking stall.
Ten-by-fifteen bedroom.
Nine-by-twenty parking stall. Imagine it's smaller than a parking.
Yeah.
Sleep standing up.
So is that something we can change or we can't change that? That's an ADU law? That's not something we can do anything about?
I'm looking that up right now.
Okay, you're looking it up.
Well, that, I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Can we go back to the the lot with the, with the red line? So I'm reading on this, the analysis that you wrote up. Well, here's the analysis. SB nine. It says the SB nine is a maximum of two twelve-hundred, here it is, of an additional unit to two twelve-hundred square foot units. But you just made a comment right now saying that if they do not want to do two units, then the second lot can have a house as big as they want.
So you're allowed, under SB nine law, you're allowed two primary dwelling units. Uh, no minimum size on those.
Okay.
Then the additional, the next two units after the primaries are capped at twelve-hundred square feet.
Oh, okay, so in this scenario, because there's an existing house, then unit three and unit four can be each a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet?
That is considered the second primary dwelling unit, and that can be whatever size fits per zoning.
So in this situation, the way you figured it here, let's just say number three, number three can be as big as the zoning code allows, and then they can still have number four be a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet. Is that correct?
The, this is a very good question. My understanding is that, do you want to take this one?
I'm sorry, I was researching the efficiency question. I, I didn't catch the question. If you want to repeat it.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in this, in this scenario, we have a primary house, one primary house. Let's say we're gonna call number three another primary dwelling unit. What is the limited, what is the maximum size of that primary unit?
If this is an urban lot split, then that would be, there wouldn't, it would be whatever the limit is under the zoning code, yeah. So there wouldn't be a artificial limit set on that through this ordinance.
Okay. So then in this, in this scenario, then unit three can be as big as the code allows, and then unit four must be a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Where in that, where is it in this section in the code? That, that's how it reads? That I have right here, in, in most of these areas, it says maximum twelve-hundred, or it always references both must be a maximum of twelve-hundred. So in the scenario that we just described, where is it noted that the second primary unit can be as big as the code allows?
It's there. I'll find it. I have it on my, my version here. I just need to find it on your version, so give me a second. It's, it's definitely there.
Or, or the section.
Um, I, give me a second, I'm sorry. Yeah, and I've got an answer to the efficiency one too, just, I want to.
Should, should we, should we take a break? No?
No, you can keep the questions coming and then I can just answer them at the end if you've, if you've got more.
So are there any other questions while she's looking those up? Okay.
If, if you have a duplex where they're attached, that duplex to me would be a second primary residence. The only way that you could do a bigger and the twelve-hundred would be to have two separate buildings. Is that correct? So I mean, if you do a duplex, isn't that always considered one?
I think Maricel's gonna clarify that, but I, I see where you're going, and I think that may be the case, is that in this scenario, this is a primary dwelling unit and the duplex is a primary dwelling unit with no cap. That could be divided, it doesn't necessarily have to be divided in half.
Right.
That that's the second primary dwelling unit, but there's two units in there.
Right.
So is it one address with a unit A and a unit B? And I think.
So what, how I would read this is that you, you could not make number three three-thousand square feet, number four restricted to twelve-hundred square feet. The whole duplex would be.
That it's a primary dwelling unit.
And it'd have to be, you know, a maximum of twenty-four-hundred.
So I have the answer to a couple of the questions. So starting first with Commissioner Solis's question regarding the maximum unit size. Um, section seventeen point zero six, one, two, zero, on page.
Twelve?
Oh, I, I'm getting, getting there. It's, um, page. I just lost it. Uh, seven?
Of the.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, no, no, of the ordinance itself. Uh, page eight of the ordinance says, uh, maximum unit size, number twelve. E twelve.
Got it.
It says there is no maximum unit size for two primary dwelling units as required by SB nine, except as limited by setbacks and lot coverage of the zoning district. Any other units besides the two primary dwelling units shall be one-thousand-two-hundred square feet maximum size. This shall not include enclosed parking spaces or private open space at the front or rear of the unit.
And, and when there's an urban lot split, there's two primary units?
There could be, or there could be a primary and an ADU. There's different configurations, so, but under the scenario where there's two primary units on both lots, there is no maximum size.
Got it. Okay.
Uh, with respect to the efficiency, this language, um, was mirroring our ADU ordinance, so I went back to look at our ADU ordinance, and it does provide that an ADU includes an efficiency unit, and then under state law, an efficiency unit is a hundred-and-fifty square feet, so that's where that is coming from.
Would it be helpful to, um, I know some codes have illustrations of the code. Would it be helpful to have that while we're, this is a new code?
I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. An illustration, you said?
So some, some codes have illustrations.
Oh, like pictures of it?
Uh, like site plans. It would have site plans and it would identify primary unit.
Sure, we have that. So if you look on the ordinance on page seven.
I have it on the screen as well.
Yeah.
That is embedded within the code. So there's a section D that talks about unit configuration and quantity that gives some examples of what it looks like under an urban lot split or under no urban lot split, but you do the four units max. And then there's exactly what Matt pulled up is in the code, or will be in the code.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you good?
I'm following up on Bob's question, where the duplex is considered one primary unit. Does that mean, would that mean that they could then do an ADU or JDU on that, next to the, that duplex?
Under the scenario where there is no urban lot split, so it's, they're just building it on one lot. You could have a duplex and you could also have an ADU on that lot. If they are doing an urban lot split, then they can only have two units.
Okay.
And the duplex would be considered two units, so they cannot add.
Even though it's primary, it's still considered two units.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Great job, Maricela.
Thank you, Maricel.
Yeah, okay, Bob.
Okay, one more. What does SB nine, what's the implications of SB nine on zoning requirements in the over, various different overlays that we have throughout the city?
Anywhere single-family zoning is allowed, whether it's our development code or a PDO or a specific plan, urban lot splits would be allowed.
Okay, so basically, if you have someplace zoned with a five-acre minimum, and they were at, say, a particular lot was six acres, they wanted to split it into two, three-acre lots, that would have to be allowed within that overlay zone. So bottom line is, all zoning requirements are kind of out the window then?
Single-family zoning as you knew it no longer exists.
Okay.
Same with minimum lot sizes.
Right. So if we have future zoning changes to make, that's something we will have to keep in mind, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, we could not say minimum five acres, uh, lots any longer.
Nope.
Okay.
We could, yeah, we could still say that. It's just if someone wants to come in with an SB nine development, it would trump that, but otherwise, if someone wants to just build one home, they're subject to our current zoning requirements.
So we could, we could zone it five acres, a developer comes in, they have to build five-acre lots, but later they could be split.
Yeah, so I, I think what you're getting at is that we have to take this stuff into consideration when we go to establish zoning.
Yeah.
So if the intent, just hypothetically, if you wanted five-acre minimum lots, well, you better start with ten acres.
Okay.
And then it can be split to five, and over time, you'd have five-acre lot minimums, or thereabouts.
That's.
I like the way you think.
Yeah, it's gonna require a lot of.
All right, any other, any other questions of our Matt?
Of the, of the team.
The team, Matt and the team. Any other questions? Are we good? We're good, Fernando? We're good. Fernando's good. All right, yeah. Okay, so do we have any, um, public comments?
We have one request to speak.
Okay.
Lawrence Slusher.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you. Is there a way to get the camera to work?
Who'll come on out and help you?
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, thank you for hearing me out. My name is Larry Slusher. Been here for twenty years. And I wanted to say how much I enjoy being here in this city. I, uh, started thinking about ADUs when they became a thing and had some hesitations with them. started thinking about ADUs when they became a thing and had some hesitations with them. Had some, uh, reservations about them and then, uh, I changed my mind and decided that, um, they were a good thing. And then when it became possible to actually own one and make a lot split, that really kind of opened my mind as to the possibilities. Because it now gives homeownership to a lot more people. And it's quality of homeownership as well. So like an ADU, if you compared it to an apartment, uh, complex, you really have a lot higher quality of life. And by able, being able to actually own it, you then have a lot more going for you, for that person who owns it. They can build up their equity, they can have a tax write-off for their interest that they paid. They can live the American dream. And so I am in favor of creating more of these smaller, uh, lots, within reason. But, um, I'm, I'm looking at it now as a citizen and thinking that though the things that the city has added, the straight lines are unfriendly to creating ADUs. And let me show you why. So if you look at my, um, example up here, there's a red line, um, here that represents the straight line that is required, uh, under what the, um, ordinance is going to be adopted or perhaps adopted as. It can't be, it, it can't be made into an ADU because it doesn't have any public access. And, uh, what it would require is this dashed line down here to enable it to have access to the public right of way. But if it's only a straight line, that won't work. This also eliminates any flag lots from being created. So when Matt showed that one example of a flag lot that had a driveway that went into the back, I live on a flag lot, it's wonderful. And, uh, this then would eliminate that possibility. So I'm concerned about that part of the, um, ordinance. That there should be, uh, not jagged lines that you see in the, the worst-case example that was up there. But, uh, a simple, uh, line like this could be very appropriate. And nobody would need to know or have a problem knowing where their property line is and where to maintain it, that type of thing. The other thing I wanted to bring out is this green line here is where, um, I'm guessing, uh, is a forty to sixty percent line. Well, if that is required, uh, every house that is built is in the middle of the lot. So you can't do a forty and sixty split because you're gonna be splitting it down the middle of the house. That eliminates an ADU there too. So I, I just, and I know that the sixty forty part was part of SB nine. Um, but maybe the city could, uh, change it to be more friendly to the creation of SB, excuse me, of ADUs that are sellable. And then lastly, I'd like to just ask the city, they changed, um, what is the significance from the eight hundred square feet to the twelve hundred square feet change that is being, um, proposed? And why did the city, uh, make that change? So that's just a question I have. And to answer your question, most of the casitas in Crown Hill are two hundred square feet, a one-car garage. So, uh, just, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Um, Matt, are there some answers that you could give Larry on those questions that he has?
Sorry. One of the questions was regarding the eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. So eight hundred, that comes from SB nine, we can't stop. We have to allow two units up to eight hundred square feet. The twelve hundred square feet, that cap comes from ADU law. So for city administration of SB nine and ADU law, and for the provision of more affordable housing and more units, we decided to, uh, cap at twelve hundred square feet. So that, that was our justification for those, that square footage.
I, I guess my question is, what is, what is the overall intent or accomplishment of?
More affordable housing, smaller units mean more affordable housing.
Okay, so it's by, it's by reducing it?
Reducing the size, reducing, reduces the cost.
Okay.
And then the scenario that's been shown, um, you know, I, I don't know that this is the appropriate place, but perhaps between now and the city council meeting, we could take a look at this, it may be a perfect flag lot scenario, I don't know that it isn't. Um, and then the sixty forty split, again, that is, that's state law as was recognized. But yeah, we'd have to take a closer look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe, um, you know, working with Larry on that and any other questions that he has and...
Sure.
And if, you know, 'cause I think they were valid questions and, um, it's hard, right?
Perhaps Ron and I could sit down with Mr. Slusher.
Okay.
That'll work.
Maybe a suggestion.
We can offer to do that.
Maybe a suggestion for the straight line that we would perhaps allow, um, up to three straight lines. No curved lines, you know, but, um, to be able to do some jogging in there with, with straight lines. Of course, that'd have to make sense, but...
I think, just, just one thing real quick.
Yeah.
I think there's a kind of a step back barrier question here, besides the specifics of this line, that line. Um, and Larry brings it up, is, you know, the, the, is the intent to make it easier to do ADUs? Or to do what is the bare minimum under the law, which will, you know, not necessarily what we have, but this is a philosophical question. We can do more to make it easier to do ADUs? Or we can do less up until what is required by the law?
Right.
So that's what, that's the question that, you know, I think that we kind of, you know, you wanna think about when you're thinking about, do we wanna make this line be able to bend this way or this line to be able to bend that way? Do we wanna change to the sixty forty? It's, what do you wanna do? Because right now, we're, our, our approach was to take the law, meet the law, and provide as much flexibility for the city to, um, make sure that we have orderly development. And that we don't have many, many circumstances out there that are kind of wild. And, yeah, as you can see by this conversation, there are so many different scenarios. And we're trying to limit the number of scenarios to make this an orderly process. So I just wanted to put that out there before we start discussing, you know, changes to the ordinance and, and what exactly are they? And why exactly are we doing it?
I, I think we all can see how complex this is, so, uh, and how difficult it will be to administer. And we'll, I'm sure we'll make some changes along the way based upon, you know...
Yeah, no doubt, I'm sure we've asked with...
Our experience.
Yep, absolutely.
But anyway, I just thought, trying to keep it orderly and still allow for some odd situations to allow up to two or three straight lines. You know, I think it's when you get into curved lines and that type of stuff that it gets really complex.
I would like to comment.
Ron, you were, you were gonna, you were gonna have a comment over there too, I'm gonna let Ron pipe in, 'cause this is really his specialty.
Yeah, so with regards to mapping standards, you know, we're governed by the Subdivision Map Act. And then when this City Incorporated, we adopted ordinance four sixty-one, which was the county ordinance, which included, if you go online today, the Riverside County Transportation Department, and really the Land Management Agency has a mapping manual. And therefore, that's kind of what we go by for the orderly development of lots. So if we were taking in a map, a parcel map, we wouldn't want to see, and we would not allow the zigzagged kind of configuration. In Mr. Slusher's case, you know, where he shows that possibility of a flag lot, you know, and how that goes, seems reasonable, and I think we just need Matt and I to come up with the language that solidifies the city engineer's ability to look at it from an orderly development standpoint and be able to apply longstanding industry mapping standards to this SB nine.
And, and I agree, and I just had a comment. I think the goal, like Luke mentioned, is orderly development. And if you cannot provide a twenty-foot wide access to another lot, then it should not be, it shouldn't be developed as an independent lot. There is already a lot of flexibility in this code and to create a lot. But I, as the way staff presented it, I think we should move forward to the way staff presented it.
I need to close the public hearing, 'cause we're kind of getting off here. So if we have any other, any other public comments?
None.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, okay? Now we can kind of discuss...
Okay, thank you. So that, that is my comment, and that is my firm belief after reading this code, asking all the questions, and working in this profession, is this, this lot split is not intended for every single lot. And I would like, and I would like to believe that these, um, conditions and these code in this section, if this cannot be made, if you can, if you cannot create a lot with these rules and these parameters that are already flexible and that are already being imposed on the city by the state, then I don't think we should be changing the code any other way to create diagonal lots or not require the minimum twenty feet or the ten-foot setback or orderly lots. So that is my comment.
Okay, got it. All right, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I concur completely with Fernando on that. And, uh, in the example, Larry, mind if I call you Larry, that they brought up, uh, the sixty forty split is a real problem, um, for him, obviously. However, that would not preclude, rather than doing a lot split, that would not preclude an ADU being put on that property, is that correct? Okay, so I, I, I sympathize with the problem on the sixty forty, but there is still an alternative um, that would fit the needs that would not fit into the sixty forty thing. So I agree, uh, with the, with what Fernando said on the, on the ordinance and that we ought to stick with it. And I think the straight lines are something we really oughta kind of focus on because if you make one exception, then that just leads to more and more and more, and all of a sudden you don't have standards anymore. So, um, I, I think, there's a million questions, as you know, Matt, you've been, you need some protective gear on to protect yourself from all the questions flying at you. But I think you've done a really good job of explaining stuff that's been handed to us, and I mean staff, um, and figure it out quick, you know, one of those. And I think you've done a real good job of that. And you could tell by the questions, uh, from all of us, that, uh, it, it's pretty unsettled stuff. And, uh, and you're, you're kind of shooting in the dark, I guess, so to speak. But, uh, I, I would lean toward the more, um, solid situation that we're dealing with with the ordinance, rather than try to pick apart little parts to deal with individual situations.
I, I would add that we do an annual code maintenance. And as we work with implementing an ordinance, that we would be able to bring back any tweaks at a, at a future time. There'll be an opportunity to work with.
And can I just clarify, so it's for the sixty forty split, it doesn't have to be exactly sixty forty. The maximum difference between the two lots is sixty forty, so it could be fifty fifty. It just can't be, you know, seventy thirty.
Anything, Bob? No?
I mean, I, you know, I, I agree, I mean, it's, um, I think just our experience is gonna give us some tweaks along the way and we'll, we'll make them, we always do, so...
Yeah, I think, um, having the flexibility that we can when we need to, right? You know, 'cause I think, um, you know, Larry's come here and brought a, an example of, you know, a real-life example, and those things are gonna come up. So I think, you know, that we should be able to look at those two and not just have a hard no. So I think, um, yeah, it's been a great discussion, lots of questions. Thank you so much for your preparation, all of you, Team Matt and Team Matt and Maricela.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, Maricela.
So, yeah, we appreciate all of that and appreciate my colleagues and their questions. And I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to, uh, accept staff recommendation on item number four. Uh, PA number LR two-two is dash zero one five eight, is that the right one?
Uh-huh. And we have a second?
I could take it.
Okay. So, motion by Gary, second by Fernando, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, four zero. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll go to Commissioner Reports, and I'll start on this end with Fernando.
Main Street, the whole town is looking great, I like the little entrance, the lights. I like all the lights on all the communities that they have in the, in the entrances, I'm excited for them.
You have the Planning Commission float ready?
I did think about it. But...
You're in charge, I'm really good at delegating.
I don't know, we're still thinking about it, my wife's pushing me to do it. I have a truck and I have a big trailer, but it doesn't take a lot of time, so we're still thinking about it.
Okay, all right, we'll get back to you on that. All right, Gary, anything? Bob?
I just, a reminder today was, is Indigenous Peoples' Day and, uh, the Puesca Mountain Day. And, um, I did get to spend half hour at, at the event. And it's just a great reminder of when there's a major issue here, our community really comes together and gives it it all. And, uh, and we were very fortunate to win that one, so...
Yeah, thank you, yes. Also, um, we went to, my husband and I went to the little, the nine, nine eleven museum. That's kind of a traveling museum at the mall. So, um, you know, I love anything about that, that reminds us of our first responders and, and all the sacrifices that were made at that time. And I think we have to always remember that. And so I appreciated, this is the only one actually in the country. And it was right here in Temecula, so that was kind of cool. And I've been to the military, um, celebration before the Veterans Day, and that, that's always awesome. So I love that our city does that, I think it's really important that we remember our heroes. And, um, so I'm grateful for that. All right, Subcommittee Reports. We don't need to make a report.
We met on SB nine today and you heard everything in the last half hour.
Yep. Any other Subcommittee Reports? No? Okay. King Luke, he's here.
Do you know the purpose now?
I did.
Um, just two things, first, um, thank you for giving us grace on this, this is, you know, this is a very difficult thing for staff. I think you know us, we like to come here ready with all the answers, ready to give you confident, strong, accurate answers. Um, and we typically are prepared to do that. And I think, I would want to thank the staff for, for, for doing that as best they could. Um, this is an untested law. It's completely, it was not thought through, and we're dealing with it. So, thank you for giving us grace and working through us with, you know, giving us all those questions. It's gonna help us at council, uh, very much so. Uh, so I just wanted to say that. And then other than that, you know, I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and we'll see you after that. That's it, see you at the parade.
Thank you. All right, Ron?
The one item I wanted to report was, um, if you recall, R C W D had some problems with some pipes that were installed back in the nineties, two thousands. And that's what prompted, if you recall, the Overland kind of destruction. And then there was the Red Hawk Parkway that went down. They have a project coming out that is going to, um, be from, um, Temecula Parkway, along Red Hawk Parkway all the way into the circle. And so that's coming in a couple of years, but in order to do the design, they need a pothole, and they have to pothole some seventy-three locations.
pothole and they have to pothole some 73 locations. And so that's going to start next week and I know it's in your area, so I wanted to let you know...
Why?
That we are, we are asking them to do that work at night when it's in the residential, I mean, excuse me, the business area. When it's in the residential area, we're not going to allow them to do those potholes at night because people are sleeping, obviously, and they'll be doing that during the day. So there'll be some extensive traffic control going on Red Hawk Parkway, starting next week, but we're going to stop them over the holidays and then they'll pick back up. But if you have any questions, let me know because it's quite a bit of potholing and I'm sure there'll be questions around, around town. But we'll have it on our trip report, we'll have it noticed, but wanted to give you a heads up.
All right. I will be getting phone calls. That will be awesome.
So just potholing for now and then they have to do, then they have to do the design. So the actual project's a couple of years, probably a year away, a couple of years away.
Thanks for all you do. Appreciate it. All right, anything else? Nope. All right. Then we're going to adjourn until Wednesday, December 6th. Wow, how can that always already be? I don't know. All right, any adjournments? Thank you.